One amendment to the agenda. And apologies from administration, this should have been on the agenda. And it'll go under Act Two. Councilor Horvath had put forward at the last meeting a notice of motion. And the notice of motion reads, move that Township Road 9-4 be included in the 2019 budget, and that the road be made into a haul route with either oil or calcium applied from 43rd Street to Highway 845. So that should have been in the agenda. And it will be now under Act Two.
Klaus?
I would have one more topic that's under the Remembrance Day Services that we did picture view it last year, and I would like to see that come again so maybe we can have it up in the agenda.
Number five. Anything else? If thought we could use a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, Robert? Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor, carry on. Minutes of October the first. Council meeting, are there any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed, carried on. Okay, pages 48 to 30, Bylaw 1801-2, Chinook Industrial. And that was a very large handout in front of your book.
It's a favorite. In case anybody needs a paper. I just want to bring up, excuse me, the map or the photos so you can... You didn't have a chance already just to see where this particular area structure plan is located. Thank you Chairman and Council. This is first reading for Bylaw 18-012 for the Chinook Industrial Area Structure Plan. It's contained within the northwest and southwest of 10, 9, 21, west of the 4th, on the west side of the S.R.A.D. Canal. In terms of the application itself, this application was made by Hasagawa Engineering on behalf of the current landowners. There's two landowners, including, well, three of you include the county because they own the stormwater pond in that area. And the purpose of the plan is to allow for future commercial and industrial development, along with associated infrastructure, so roads, ponds, that kind of thing, within this area. And it's directly north of the existing Rave industrial sites contained within the county's municipal development plan, as well as the City of Lutford and Lutford County Municipal Development Plan. In addition, the lands proposed in the ASP have been identified in the county's industrial commercial land use strategy as an area for future growth. This application was circulated to the other county departments, City Lutford, and external agencies for the review and comment. We are anticipating that upon first reading that people set public hearing for the second meeting in November. And just in case there's any questions on how the circulations, we have had, we've had this application in our hands for about 18 months, so it's been here for a long time. But that's because we've had a lot back and forth with the applicant and also with the City Lutford as regards to complying with the policies that are contained within the IDP. But in the, during the last circulation, the city was comfortable with the plan, as were county staff, in terms of what was being presented. And this is really a good moving forward project for the county in terms of developing our commercial industrial lands and really implementing that strategy that was approved two years ago. So if there are any questions, the council?
Klaus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you point to a pointer exactly where it is?
So it's this big, kind of, it's existing farmland right now, so, and then there's also the parcel down here which is, Southland International has that, they use it kind of as a parking area right now. But we know that that landowner is kind of the driver with regards to this project, he wants to build a new building, and this is his preferred location. And then the county owns this pond here, which is a stormwater management pond, and it will be used for, it's used for Rave Industrial Park right now, and it'll also be used as part of this development to the north, so it'll all tie in together. So it's all the lands from 9-2 down to...
9th Avenue.
9th Avenue.
So Hillary, what, how does the process work now for, because just on the south of 9th Avenue there, we're Gilmore Green, Hockepp, water and wastewater. Will these people in this area be required to do the same, or how does that, is that part of it?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is part of the plan and the servicing study that was completed. The long-term vision for this area would be that it would tie into that more regional wastewater system that we're proposing between, that we, that study we did with Coldell to look at the Coldell-Lutford corridor there in terms of servicing. In term servicing, we, that's where we have had discussions with the city that in term servicing would be permissible, as long as it met the current agreement that we have in place in terms of off-peak discharge and wouldn't overload their existing system. But they would, they would allow it to a certain extent, so not for the entire thing, for the development of the entire area, which is 147 acres. But probably for phase one would be, and this will take a long time to develop out too, so we're hoping that it will coincide with that longer range vision of having that system between, between the county of Lutford County and the town of Coldell.
So concurrently, it works something like Fairview then? Or they...
Yeah. Yes, it would, it would work like that, yeah. And that's how it works in Rave right now, is that it's kind of an off-peak discharge. They have to have holding tanks, and then it gets discharged at, you know, four o'clock in the morning or something like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along 18th Avenue and 14th Avenue, if streetlights ever have to go in, is that addressed in here at all?
Yeah, so when they did the traffic impact assessment, which is why these documents tend to get so large, is because the traffic impact assessment is about half of this. They did look at when, when we would need to have lighting or road upgrades to 43rd Street, and then, so that's in the plan that, yes, it would eventually have to happen. I don't recall the exact timeframe, but I think it was maybe 2035, depending on how fast development occurs. So that's something that we will have to address once the, once our first subdivision comes in, once this is going through, and we have a subdivision to work with. We're going to have to come up with the schedule of how we're going to handle getting, making sure that we have enough funding in place to support putting in lighting. So whether that's going to be through an off-site levy, so that's a bylaw that council would have to approve, or if we do it as just part of the development agreement as a cost that every landowner would have to pay into, so that we don't run into, say, similar situation with Brockton where we're getting a little bit caught off-guard, and then we have to upfront that money and then trying to get it back from landowners or business owners afterwards. We're going to try to be much more proactive on this, getting it as we go along, so that hopefully when the time comes for that lighting system or an upgrade to a road that we have it already, oh wait, like in a reserve or something, so that we can just go towards that without any issues with the landowners or who paid it and didn't pay.
And so one more question, Hillary, when you spoke of the road, is 43rd, is that a provincial road, or is that a city, or like if they have to coin it the rest of the way up to, who pays that bill?
So with regards to 43rd Street, that particular stretch up to Township Road 9-2 is in the city. It's a city in their jurisdiction for the road, so they would be the ones who would be upgrading it, and then they would be asking the county for assistance in that matter. So they would be asking to ensure the right ways are the right size and long subdivision, and we would be working with them on that. So that was a large part of our discussions that we had, is just with the city to make sure that the policies are in place to guide the development as it goes along, so that we're capturing all of these things at the front end, that we're aware of them as we go through, and that we're kind of building a good relationship with the city as this development occurs.
Okay, any other questions? Use the motion then. Any further discussion? Call for the question, those in favor, those opposed, carried. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Municipal Services, page 31 to 37, request for equipment purchase pre-approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Municipal Services is requesting that County Council grant pre-approval for some equipment that we'd like to procure before the anticipated budget approval in December. We're looking at two grader wings to be utilized for snow removal, and a sliding axle tilt trailer. These pieces of equipment require early approval, and I'm sure they were received in time for the 2019 season. So our recommended motion is that County Council approves Municipal Services to proceed with the purchase of two grader wings at a total cost of $120,000 to be funded through the Public Works Project Reserve, and one sliding axle tilt trailer at a total cost of $131,000 to be funded through proceeds of sales of $49,500 and $81,500 from the fleet reserve. So the two, just for some background, the two wings that we would like to purchase will assist in obviously snow removal for the snow season, the winter season. We want to put them on our two construction graders that we have right now, that are mainly used for emergency situations when we have heavy snowfall. They're mainly in our hamlets, and that wing gives us the ability to plow our haul routes and our paved roads, or sorry, more so our haul routes. The advantage of having the wing, obviously, is you get onto the side slope a little bit, and that reduces some drifting onto the roads, you don't have to come back as often if there's some, if there's some winds that drift the roads in pretty bad. And then on to the trailer, we've had some, we've had some staff come forward with the existing trailer. It's a flat deck with a Jeep and booster, and loading some of the equipment is difficult for some of the operators, specifically our packers. So this sliding axle tilt trailer, if you look at page 34, this, just the design of it is safer for the guys to load the equipment, and this can handle any piece of equipment we have, excluding the scraper. The scraper we contract out to move basically from the north to the south side of the river, and then back to the north. And it's much cheaper to have a contractor come in and move it than to try and purchase a trailer that can accommodate that scraper. It's, it's a pretty big piece of equipment. As I mentioned, the two graders are the construction graders that we want to put these wings on. Because we're going down from nine to seven grader beats, we feel that these two construction blades, or these two construction graders can be utilized for regular snow maintenance in the wintertime. I guess the, the financial implications, as I mentioned before, the trailer, we've got a cost of $131,000. We're looking at $49,500 that will get through the sales of the existing trailer, with the remaining $81,500 coming from the fleet reserve, and the grader wings at $120,000 from the Public Works Project Reserve, which has a balance of $2.4 million. The fleet reserve is about $3.3 million.
Yes, sorry, Klaus.
The reserve that we have, is that always at that amount?
The Public Works, is it?
Yeah, the reserve that we have for these weeks.
Tracy, the 343.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It fluctuates year to year, depending on the number of purchases that are scheduled to happen that year. It can go up and down, and it also depends on how much the equipment is used that year. We do try to maintain a pretty happy balance in there because, you know, a grader can cost half a million dollars, so it doesn't take long to deplete it. Same for Public Works, their projects just tend to be more expensive in nature, so we do keep it. As for the reserves policy though, that was approved in the fall?
I'll say, oh, but the reserve that we have in, we, we're going to have to be taking it out of the budget sometime if we're going to be having more of these big capital items. So the reserve is for this, but why don't we put like these new, these new purchases, why don't we put that, why don't we, if that budget time is up? Is that because there's not enough time in order to get it up time for the season?
That's correct.
Isn't the season that you mentioned, 2019 season, and especially for the, for the blades and for the snow removal, will that be there for the, this coming winter, or is that next winter?
This coming winter, yes.
Because you were talking about 2019?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But we can get lots of them in December.
That, that's correct, yeah. And with the trailer as well, if we don't order it right away, we're looking at the end of next fall to get that trailer, so we won't be able to use it at all in 2019.
Robert, then Tracy.
Thanks, Mark. Are we trading the trailer in for the trailer, or are we keeping all of yours still?
We're going to be selling the old trailer, okay?
Tracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just mentioning that both of these projects will be included in the budget and are in the budget already, just that they are here to get early approval, but you will still visit them even though they'll already be purchased.
So just a question, so you're going to seven divisional graders, do they already all have wings?
Yes.
So what about the two that you're getting rid of, do they have wings?
Yes.
Yes. So why can't you put those two on the utility construction graders as part of the guaranteed buyback that we have through Caterpillar? The wing has to be included with the, with the grader?
The two graders that we're disposing of are John Deere's. They mount differently than a cat. We have to purchase extra valves for the cats, and some plumbing and whatnot to make them work. The, the stuff from the John Deere won't transfer to the cat.
Okay, it, it could be, but it would require some work?
No, I don't think it could be, because the way the front of the, of the plow mounts to the body, chassis of the grader, is totally different.
Devin, can you explain just a bit the buyback program? You just mentioned the buyback program doesn't allow, wings need to be included with the grader.
Yeah, with, with the buyback program, if you, if you purchase that grader with that attachment, you're guaranteed buyback. If you want that to mount accordingly, it has to include that wing when you, when you take the grader back.
Any other questions? Other discussion? Need a motion then? Steve? Any further discussion? Call for the question, those in favor, those opposed, carried on. Thank you. Number two is a notice of motion.
Move that Township Road 9-4 be included in the 2019 budget, and that the road be made into a haul route with either oil or calcium applied from 43rd Street to Highway 845.
So, just to be clear, this is to look into it, or this is to do it?
We're actually right now voting if we want this motion to go forward. Is that correct, Larry? Yes? Thank you.
So, so I'm still not clear. So you're, you're putting it forward to the budget, or you're putting it forward to be a project, or you're voting you accept it? Tracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Councilor Horvath is putting a motion on there to have this project added into the 2018 budget, so, or sorry, 2019 budget. So, yeah, pending approval from council, if, if it goes ahead, then administration will incorporate that into the budget, because currently it's not being considered.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Klaus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, I would like to see a little more information on this, and so I would like to amend the motion that we look into putting it in the 2019 budget.
Would you request that administrative report come back to council?
Yes, that's correct.
The only reason I brought it forward is one of all, most of all used roads in the, in our section, and now the Cavendish is coming through. It's a straight road from 845 to Cavendish. And they've been using it lots to haul potatoes or whatever, so that's the reason I'm putting it forward.
So just before I go, can you bring this road up, so we know where it is?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that, that's why I'm bringing it up, that we look into it as council, if we're going to be putting that in the budget, and that what kind of funding could be maybe coming from the city? Because I think that that's why we have to, have to discuss it further.
So it'd be, Mr. Chairman, from this point, right here where the hand is, eight miles over to Highway 845, that's Township Road 9-4.
So was that on the very north end of the county?
End of 4th Street.
Well, that's where the, that's where the hall to the dump is.
Oh, Bear Crumb Side.
It intersects, it intersects with the road to the dump?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And you would want to do the whole thing?
That's what I would hope, because since Cavendish is coming on Street to haul potatoes, there are potatoes growing in the area now in our area, and that road, I know from, it's a major road that people haul and their truck on it, so, and you can travel eight kilometers and it is a rough shape all the time, just a moment.
Just a suggestion too, I think that council does need more information. We've had some cursory discussions with the city on this road, and the fact that they are open to negotiate with some kind of cost recovery because of the Cavendish plant. We do have meetings with them next week on this and some other matters, so I would suggest bringing back a recommendation or a more fulsome report in November.
So as part of that report, could you tell us a bit about what would be considered the old Coldell Road? Is it banned, or will it be banned at certain times of year? By, that 26, I guess it is. Is that 9-? Well, on straight, straight east of Walmart there, wherever you, where the water?
This one, right here.
Yeah.
So you're asking if it would be banned?
Is it banned where it's, I think it's paved for, what, four, three miles?
Three miles.
How long is 845?
How's that?
For Brockton Road.
Yeah. I can't recall.
I think they didn't have that around, because they recommended you're blocked in on that road, and they're still answering.
So maybe you could include that as part of your report?
Sure, absolutely.
Any further discussion then? No, no, no.
Well, it says in there.
Okay, no further discussion?
Is that correct now? Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we need a report? I mean, we're going to be in budget discussions in November anyway, we can discuss, discuss it then, how it could be funded in the future.
Can you remind me, Tracy, why it wasn't included? Is it because it wasn't one of the roads, or Devin maybe, one of the roads, why wasn't this road looked at in 2019 budget?
Well, we're, in the 2019 budget, we have identified 10 miles of future consideration that when we did all the tours with each council member, there was additional 30 miles that were included for consideration, for future consideration. So we're going to look at those roads and try and identify the best candidates, basically. So if we have 10 miles for next year, this would take up eight of those 10 potentially, unless you wanted to add the eight on top of 10.
Klaus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's the reason why we wanted to change in the motion, because I think it's good to have the information back from the city, what the city is proposing, and if we can get some money for that, because I think that's really important, because it is their industrial Cavendish that is going to be a major, a major user of that road.
Okay. So would you wish the committee then, or the council, to have a report back before budget?
There's two options you can do. You can either have a report back before budget, or you can, we can bring additional information to budget about this road. Either or.
Either or, okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion? It doesn't say to bring it back to where, so it should be okay then?
Yeah.
Okay. Call for the question then? All those in favor? Opposed, carried on. Okay, Community Services, page 38. Coldell had the Coldell Christmas Night of Lights Parade on November 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This just is a report to ask that council authorize any member of council who wishes to attend the Coldell Christmas Night of Lights Parade on November 23rd, 2018. It starts at 7:00 PM. I don't have all the details on the meeting place and stuff like that, but as soon as I have them, I'll let whoever's attending know.
That's on a Friday night?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question, those in favor, opposed? Nate, well, who wants to go?
Wants to be in the parade. Thank you very much.
Okay. Corporate Services. Nothing. I like that one. Administrator? 39, is he, is he saying? Who's presenting that?
Just for background, as you know, the, under the new MGA, there's a request for counties to have ICFs with their surrounding neighbors, and we have quite a bit of work ahead of us. We have to do ICFs with the urbans and with all the surrounding counties and MDs as well. Because we've, there also, the requirement is that an IDP has to be completed before an ICF can be put into place. As you know, we just completed Tabor's IDP, so this is the ICF for Tabor. Because there's minimal borders with the surrounding MDs and counties, we'll be moving forward with the other four, the remaining four, and we've already reached out to those, and we've set up dates for December to get that rolling with the IDPs, and then we'll follow that with the ICFs, because we'd like to get this going quite quickly, we have so many to do. With regards to the IDP, to keep costs down with the surrounding counties and MDs, instead of farming it out to ORSC, we are going to do it internally, because we have a draft from Tabor that we because we have a draft from Tabor that we can use as kind of a framework for it. So, this is the first draft. This has been vetted by Tabor. They're bringing it to their meeting, I think, early next week. And the CAO and I there have worked back and forth on this for over the past few months.
So, just out of curiosity, did ORSC do that for Tabor?
No, I believe that, the IDP, yes.
No, I mean, the ICF?
No, no. Tabor did that internally.
So, does it cover off what it needs to, like?
Yes. It has been run through municipal affairs, and it does meet all the criteria. Of course, we will have to submit it once it's been approved by council. And if municipal affairs, I understand, are quite swamped with these, because they're starting to get them in. And I don't think they really understood the ramifications of putting this legislation into place. But we will, once it's adopted by council, we will submit, and there may be some changes required from the province. We can't tell that yet.
Claus?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just for clarification, because we have the idea, whatever it is, we have that one in place with the MD of Tabor. Now, we're looking at ICF. So, how much extra has to be done to get the ICF ratified with the MD of Tabor? Because I think we have a lot to be done through the IDP.
The IDP is an intermunicipal development plan, and it's more about land use planning. The ICF is more of an inter, what's called intermunicipally community collaboration framework. And it is more about shared services. And that's why, with regards to the surrounding counties, we don't have a lot of shared services. The ICFs with our urbans that are located in the county are going to be a lot more involved, and also with the city, obviously, because we share so much services with the surrounding counties. There is not so much. So, really, the difference is IDP is planning, and ICF is shared services.
Go ahead, Ken, sorry.
Okay, so municipal service haven't seen this? So, they need to see it before, at site, or after a site?
We have a draft that was worked on by the CAO of Tabor, and he's run that through to make sure that the draft was okay, and he's shared it with everybody. And that's what this is based on. And then we will have to, once it's approved by this council and Tabor's council, we have to resubmit it. But what I was alluding to is that previously, the draft had been vetted through the municipal affairs.
So, we signed it then?
Any further discussion? Claus? You have the one first reading? Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor?
Yeah, actually, you need to adopt the plan first, and then do the readings at the final. That's the first motion.
That's, because that was your motion.
That was your motion.
Yeah. Okay. So, Claus has moved to adopt the inter collaborative framework agreement, or in principle, I guess. Are there any discussions on that? Seeing now, I'll call for the question, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Okay, now, we're doing first reading. Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Second reading? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we don't need to have a public hearing like we do on the IDPs or the ICS? Okay. I will move.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Yeah, you have to go to the third. Can, has to be unanimous. Any further discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Third reading? Tori? Any further discussion? Call a question, those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Thank you. Okay. Administration, Utbridge County. Oh, I'll give you that one. County council meeting dates changes from January 16th to April 14th to March 14th. 68 to 69.
I can speak to that. There's a lot going on in January, February, March with different conferences and whatnot. We're just trying to get a jump on it, so everybody can have their schedule coordinated. So, we're looking at, we're doing strategic planning, Ag Services Board, and quite a few other things. So, we're putting this forward to council for approval, so that we can know ahead of time the three dates in January that we would have council meetings.
Claus?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm just wondering, we have the date set for two a month. Are we going to be having sufficient time to be able to do our council work in that time?
We hope so. And with strategic planning and the other conferences, too, council are going to be quite busy. I think normally, we only have one meeting in January. Is that?
And February.
And February. And so, it's just March that's we're going to miss. If something comes up that's crucial, we could schedule a special meeting. But we try not to, because we have pretty scary.
Any other discussion? Well, I kind of think that I'd rather see it remain as it is, with two meetings a month except for January. But it seems like at times, you kind of get in a bind, and all of a sudden, you have an agenda as thick as this to go through. And they're not particularly nice to deal with. So, I'd rather see the schedule remain as it is.
Tracy, can you help me with the dates? What were the dates that we took off there?
Thank you. January 3rd and January 17th. But I think you said you're okay with the one meeting in January, right? January is quite heavy with the ASB, the TIP, and strap planning and everything. So, we, normally, we do one meeting in January.
And the third would be extremely challenging, given that we're just back to work on the second.
And in February, February 7th and 21st would be your dates? February 7th and 21st? I guess that could remain as is. Some were in there. Do we have, did you have the Brownlee Conference mention in here? February 7th, so we would have to move the February 7th meeting, which is kind of where we got into a bit of discussion here, because the 11th is family day, so you can't move to the Monday. And then you got a meeting that's like a little less than, you know, almost a week apart. So, that's kind of why we figured one meeting in February. But then last year, I think we did one meeting? But you could move the 7th maybe to the 8th and do the 21st as usual? That's an option.
Okay, so that's for February?
Yes. And then in March, you would have to move, well, you don't have to. In March, it would be 7th and 21st. You're just coming back from the RMA conference on the 20th evening. I guess that depends if you guys want to get up and go to the council meeting in the morning. So, you could, you could leave March alone if you don't mind a long night's travel and then coming to work the next day.
That's what we were trying to avoid.
Claus?
Then I would suggest that we do it as suggested here, that February 14th, and further, no meeting in February, and just leave March as with the two meetings that we normally have.
Ken?
We have to set that, strategic plan dates. Tracy, did we?
Well, we're looking at the last week in January or the second week in January, is what we've, and I'm, I'm discussing. Working around the schedule, so either this is the, like, leave on January 6th to 8th, or January 27th to 29th. Once we get these dates picked with the council meetings, then we can bring back the report for the strap planning dates.
So, what were the dates at the end? Sorry, what were the dates at the end of January for strap planning?
27th to 9th. Or 30th, depending on, there's a change in form.
When is Ag Service Board?
21st to 23rd.
Which were better for council for strap planning?
First two weeks do not work.
7th to 9th, doesn't work for you?
No, I'm not back there for 20.
What about the 27th to 29th? Does that work for everybody?
It's your guys' calendars that are so heavy the first three months of the year. We're just trying to work around them. Plus, it's typically slower reporting months for us. There's no construction going on. Work really hasn't started on the roads or anything. But everything's weather dependent, right? If it's really miserable, snow out, we could be.
So, do you know if you can get a facilitator, or somebody for?
We're going to have the RFP out by the end of October to get a facilitator.
So, maybe, is it premature to think about?
Well, it's kind of one, right?
We can't really, it's kind of a chicken and egg situation. We have to book, it's very challenging to get the facility, so we have to book the facilities. We feel confident we'll get a facilitator. We'll have the RFP done. Tracy and I are working on that, so.
Yeah. And I mean, we can give them our preferred date. If they, if they absolutely aren't available that day, then we'd have to come back. But it'd be nicer to go to them with a date in mind, to say, this is when we've got a plan.
When we send out the RFP?
Book the hotel, because we need to do that right now.
Where is strap planning this year?
Was in Kenmore.
Yeah, we're going to do Kenmore.
Where's it?
Kenmore.
Kenmore.
Again, it's easier.
Same place.
Claus?
I know you said it's easier, but do we have to go that far to Kenmore? I mean, we can go close and by to, that would still, a little bit closer to home, then you don't have to go all the way to Kenmore. Because in Kenmore, there's, I mean, it's winter. How about Las Vegas?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, last year, we did bring a report forth with three different locations listed. We have Waterton, and Crowsness Pass, and Kenmore. And council voted, I'm pretty sure you and Adam sleep for Kenmore. We've gone there every year. It works well for us. I guess we can explore every year different locations. There is reasonably priced for us. Waterton is limited to facilities, as was Crowsness Pass. Other options closer to home could be Madison Hat. I don't think there was an appetite. We brought that forward one year before.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to see an option for LaFarge, for having it here somewhere, and prices and everything.
Okay, we can do that for the November 1st meeting?
Yeah. We'll bring it back.
So, if you want to proceed your table, this date changed thing. I'll move to table at 2, if I'm first being. Those in favor? Those opposed? Carried now. Invitations. Page 70 and 71. The Town of Coldale, Remembered State Services. I think it's important that council do attend these. So, Steve?
I'll move the recommendation. Any word, doesn't it?
I don't think we can, can you do that? Then I'd better do it all to get it separate. Any further discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Opposed? Carried now. The Royal Canadian Legion, Remembered State, 72, 73? Okay, who wants to go to Coldale? I probably should go to the next one. Thanks for this Royal Canadian Legion, page 72, 73. Is that the day we, are we going to Edmonton? We have to leave that day. Or is that the next week?
That's a Monday.
Or Sunday?
It's a Sunday.
So, isn't this on Sunday?
Yeah.
But the 18th is when I go in.
Oh, the next week? Okay. Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Opposed? Carried now. Yeah, I will, I will attend. Okay, Orbanry Competition for the case competition, the gala dinner. Page 74 to 76. Yes?
No, it's not Sunday. It's November 1st.
Oh, Monday?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it was wrong in here.
Okay. Tori and I went to this, just to the dinner part. I don't know whether Tori went to anything else or not. It's at the university this year, isn't it?
Yeah. University on Friday and college on Saturday.
When's the dinner part?
Saturday. Saturday evening.
I don't know right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Reed mentioned, we both attended last year. It was a really nice event. It was great to spend time with the students. And it is an event that the county sponsors. So, I would encourage, if anyone's interested, it was a good experience, and I would encourage anyone to go.
We were fortunate, got to sit with the many team. Yes, we do. We need, we need a motion. Okay. All in favor of that? Opposed? Carried now. So, you want to go on?
Yeah.
Anybody else? So, the two of you go?
That's on the front.
Okay. Uh, page seventy-seven, Colville District Emergency Service Christmas Dinner and Awards Summer Ceremony, November twenty-four, January last, M.C. Need a motion? Tori? Any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor? Opposed, carried. Who wants to go? Anyone else? Steve, what are you doing?
I'm not sure.
I'm not either, for that day. Okay, I'll have to let you know. Okay, let's move on to number five, Picture People Remembered State Services. Claus?
Yes, I, uh, I attended, uh, county last year, and I think that, that is one that we cannot miss, and I guess, uh, the county has, uh, in the past, has never been there, and they really appreciated that, uh, the county was there, and, uh, they also asked if we could, uh, make, make this, uh, maybe rethink that we would always be there, and I think that would be a great idea.
Are you making that a motion?
I'll move that, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Call for the question, ma'am, those in favor? Opposed, carried. And who wants to go? Claus?
Mr. Chairman, I will go, and I will, uh, cause I'm gonna lay a wreath there, and, uh, I got a wreath last year, and I got it at home, so, uh, I'll take care of that.
Anyone else? Okay. So do we need to move into Catmore now? And do we have time?
We have.
I don't know, it says close second. You have got anything? Okay, I guess we can adjourn till, till one.
There's no item.
No. It says corporate services too, but there's just no item.
Okay.
We just left all them.
Okay, we can adjourn till two.
Just on a side of the wall.
Did you, both wanna go, go?
Sorry?
I was.
Motion, Joe, adjourn until two o'clock. Tori, you've been doing that. All in favor? Carry.